Ready for the system to catch up?
Yeah.
Welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting, special session for Thursday, September 5th. The hour has reached four thirty PM, so call me in order, and first item is to stand for the point of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everyone other than the Constitution, the Constitution of our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call for this evening David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
President.
Jim Kane.
President.
Trevor Dursky.
President.
Samantha Peterson. Thank you, everyone. Item number two, discussion of possible action regarding the selection of a firm to provide executive services for a city administrator. Which we heard a presentation at the last council meeting. Anyone entertain a motion to, for those two firms?
I would, um, I will make a motion to, I don't know the process here, Sandy, we have to direct you to, um, today. In the putting of contract with that firm on Tuesday's agenda. Okay, I'll make a motion to put a contract on Tuesday's agenda to work with MGT.
That's the one on the other way. I was living on that, he was in Iowa, but he was, his basis is Illinois.
He was the first presenter.
I'll say the motion. So, motion second for the discussion.
I guess it's a little bit of information on why, although I really appreciate the, the process that, that MGT and, and he had laid out, especially the first phase where the, where he does the interviews with us and really takes time to understand what we each individually and as a group want and need. And the person, you mentioned working a staff and maybe some community leaders as well, and I think that's really something that we need to, to start this process off and be most efficient with the search. I also liked or I felt comfortable with the twelve month guarantee, um, the fact that they specialize in, in finding people for these city government positions. And, um, the fact that, and he quote, there's a quote from when he said, he'll be with us until the end. So for those reasons, I think MGT could do it.
For the discussion?
I guess my, my comments on that was I was impressed with their background of government. Right now, just from my perspective, we need someone in this office that makes sure that we're adhering to the government practices, principles and stuff. I'm concerned that if we don't have that knowledge and experience in the past, that we're going to dig the hole deeper than we've got in the past. And we're still not clear with the state auditor on all of the problems that we've got. And we've got so many procedures and stuff that we haven't kept up with the changes as the town has grown. And as the state laws and stuff have changed, I think we really need a level of experience there to get us to the next step before. I'm concerned that we're going to have to pay our staff more than what we would normally have to pay just to get us dug out of that hole. Or we're going to keep sliding down there. I think these people will give us, in my opinion, you know, we're, we're just going to have to bite the bullet and get some good knowledge, experience to build our staff to where it needs to be. And at that point in time, then maybe we could have what is reasonable for a town to decide. But to me, we need something more than just what an average town like this has to get us out of the situation we're in. I think these people appear to have the knowledge and expertise that'll help us get there.
Further discussion?
I'm not in favor of MGT. I'd much rather not get anybody from, uh, that has a government background. I would rather see us utilize somebody from the private sector that's been held accountable for budgets, that's been held accountable for safety and things of that nature. So that's where I stay. I'd also like to add somebody real quick. And they got more skin in the game because they, you, you gotta, they, you have to pay them after they find somebody that suits your needs. Not somebody that you pay them to find somebody and then you wait until they have the time or whatever to get the person to you.
For me personally, just because I know everything I know from the years, is, you know, usually the instant would be like, yeah, let's get somebody from government, has all the experience. But, I mean, I, I really, really want somebody outside of government. I think we, I know we've got some of these issues and stuff like that, can't even disagree with Jim on some of them. But I truly want somebody outside of government. I mean, I think somebody that's a fresh.
I don't understand the job of that office, I really don't.
Jim, can I speak without you opening your mouth? I know that office more than anybody in this freaking room other than her. And, so stop yapping your effin' mouth.
EJ, just continue with your.
For real?
Your thoughts.
Everybody is freaking tired of it.
EJ.
Everybody, just shut up and, or leave.
EJ, just continue with your.
Yeah.
Thoughts.
You are the problem, Jim.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
So I can finish my point.
Well, hearing, hearing the further discussions, we'll call for a vote.
How about you, Trevor, what's your thought? Anyways, let me finish my thought. The reason for it is normally, I would say, let's go with somebody that has the government experience. I totally understand what everybody's point of it. At some point, I think a completely fresh set of eyes on everything. And not saying that whoever we get locally or that's, might not have some kind of city experience maybe, but the point is completely fresh. That can be, look at everything and be trained, you know, obviously they still need to do all the requirements, all the trainings that city has in play. You've got experience from like Teresa, you know, that can, that can teach, that has had thirty-five years' experience and all that stuff. That is my thought process instead of somebody that just already has politics, already has government experience. That's the stuff that, because they already have their set in mind, because well, I've been doing this for thirty years and blah, blah, blah. Sometimes a fresh set of eyes is what sometimes needs, and that's what I think Atkins needs. Somebody that's has auditing outside, but then can come in and see it from the inside from government. That's where I'm getting from, you know?
Good, Trevor, you have some thoughts?
We, um, we initially, I think the first conversation we had about this that I recall was in February, um, that were others involved. And we agreed at the time to post something and then give it some time to see what, what came back locally. We didn't get a large amount of candidates that I know of. And, and I don't think that, I'm just kind of curious how, where do we go from here? Because we have tried to, um, other firms that are not like kind of expressly government or government oriented. And for me, if I side by side what I heard from MGT versus Express, I would favor MGT. I think the process was more, was more, was better articulated. I think it was tailored to the solution we're looking for here. I just, I'm kind of curious, knowing that, that we have a critical vacancy, like what would be the way ahead? To what you're describing, how would we get there? And how quickly could we get there?
We already got the people hired that we need, that, to keep things going.
We have to.
I don't get it, but you already got it. We, that's the reason, like, we wanted to bring Teresa on too, my reason.
We have to have a clerk, by law. We have to have somebody who needs a clerk. Is that correct?
Yeah, you've got to have such a clerk.
Yeah. So, and we all agree.
That's not what I'm saying.
Even, well, so who would be the clerk?
You're still hiring that person. I'm just saying you got Teresa that helps get that person trained.
To buy us more time?
Buy us more time, you're going to get, you're going to get somebody in here quicker with, with, uh, our local firm than we would somebody that's outside of here.
Well, remember the motion is to select.
Executive.
A executive search firm, if you're talking about hiring the particular person.
No, he's saying, you're just expressing.
I'm just saying, express.
Well, uh, I've heard some discussions about the, the type of person that would be hired. Keep in mind, this is a motion for the executive search firm, and there would be an opportunity of looking at their process. You can have a discussion with that search firm on what you're looking for.
Trevor, let me just say something. So, for the local one, like, like, I, I agree with you. When it comes to, yes, we wanted, you know, we put it out there, you know, we got, what, one, two people, whatever it was, um, you know, I would think Express or whoever would, local would be able to get a more broader range than what we're getting out of that. That would be my expectation at minimum. I would just assume that would be the case. And then, um, no, I can't say it, no. It's not at this point, so.
I see what you're saying with the fresh set of eyes, but I, I think it's so important to have somebody that's able to step in and just knows the job like Sandy did. I think having to train someone that from, that doesn't have the experience in, in this position would be, would be tough. And it would, it would set us back, maybe it's not going to be with us or, you know, we don't know how much longer or whatever. So, I, I really think we need to find someone that knows the job, that can step in and, and push us forward.
Certainly, the other thought process I was going to say, I guess, is, okay, so we hired Teresa, we hired this, the other one to make sure the financial side is continuing to go forward, no matter what, you know? And that's the thought, kind of the thought process is like, okay, if you get maybe someone outside of the realm, you know, one, they're getting a fresh set of eyes, two, this is already getting done. Teresa can help train them on some of this stuff, and they're going to get an education and stuff like that. I just, in politics, there's too much in the politics. And it just would be nice to have someone that just isn't ingrained in so much politics from everything.
Well, the clerks are supposed to be a political.
They're never a political.
Well, I mean, Sandy, as a career, as a career clerk, what, how, how you respond to that sort of?
I mean, clerks have a defined job, which is in the state code, that you can see that's responsible. They are hired by a better one than body. So, um, read the newspaper about how, I mean, their, their bosses are you. So there is actually.
Sure, but should be, should they be out campaigning for certain council members?
By law, they cannot.
They cannot? That is my point. That is my point. I think, I think the politics happen in here. I think what we're hiring is a technical expert, actually. And, and to the extent somebody would consider like a social media post of the town trying to explain what it's done, if they consider that political. I mean, I think there's got to be this space where the town just has an obligation to communicate and provide information. Right, because I, I'd see a situation where it almost doesn't matter who gets put there, depending upon how you define political, it's going to get political.
It's a government position.
I mean.
Government positions by definition are political.
I, I, my concern is, is.
But keep in mind.
We heard it from the news. We, we heard a commitment from MGT to, to interview and talk to each of us individually, to understand each of us individually, and to somehow bring that back together into, you know, a synthesis of all of our ideas. And then, you know, go forth with, with that for a candidate. I did not hear that level of interest, or sorry, express. I, I just didn't hear that there was any incentive, certainly no financial incentive, right? They, they don't get paid until the very end. I, I, I hear you viewing that from our perspective as a benefit to our cash flow, I hear that. But that also means they're going to expect.
I think they've all made up our minds.
The speed process, I just, I.
I would say too, that it's urgent that we continue to move forward with, with filling this permanent position.
But, but how do we do this, Bruce? How do we do this? Because either way, we're divided on the selection, which sets us up to be divided on the candidate selection. So, somebody tell me how this works.
Well, the, the first thing is to, uh, select the executive search team, and then they can work with the council to make a smooth over those things. Provide, you'll have an opportunity to provide that input from what the presentation indicated on what you're looking for as far as a candidate or the, to fill the position. So, the, the first step would be to hire the firm that has the process in place to possibly accomplish what you're, what you want. And that process being gathered in.
I, I know, but I think, I think what we're on is, is our heels already.
So, I, I would agree that that's more difficult, you know, a split vote, but, um, as one of the gentleman, Mark, I believe his name was, indicated, that could be something they've dealt with before. So.
I, I think MGT is a stronger choice for a designer. I think that's what he told us.
I didn't like that he, that he bashed another town that he's working with.
Well, I think the.
Did it bother you that Express said he had no interest in meeting with the community?
No, no, he didn't either. He didn't want to meet with the community.
Yeah, he said he didn't want to, but Mark didn't say.
With us. Not with the community. He was referred to the community, both of them were referred to the community, they don't want to meet with the community.
No, MGT, no, MGT. This is the thing, maybe, MGT has that in their proposal. They even do a community survey, you ask for one, otherwise they will, what he said is they will meet with community leaders, people that you have designated outside of this body. The library director, the board of, you know, board of library, you know, trustees, um.
It's like this council's really giving a crap about what the community's wanting anyhow, all along.
Well.
How is that accurate?
I'm talking about when we're, when we voted on the fire station, so let's just move on with it.
How's that an accurate statement? That's your.
I mean, that's my opinion.
That's your opinion, but that's.
I talked to a lot of people, Trevor, you didn't.
I did actually talk to a lot of people.
Let's just move on.
Somehow your people are more important.
Well, and possibly executive search person could help us with another set of eyes to guide us through this whole process.
I think we agree we're going to hire somebody. It's, it's unfortunately, we're, we have a, I think we've got a different, we've, we've got two distinct kind of guiding ideas. One is to look, keeping it local, I think, I don't want to speak for other council members, and, and keeping it, um, giving, open up the opportunity that somebody from, without a government background can be considered. Right, and, and I think where I'm at.
I, I just didn't get the idea from him that he would even look outside other than government people. I mean, their, their whole focus is, is that.
I, I didn't get that from him. He said that he had hired several CEOs and business people and brought them in and his other, and he works with the private sector on his hiring.
If we, if we, if we pause for a minute and open it up to consider, for, just ask Mark if, if he would consider adapting the process to, to specifically include private sector candidates.
I don't know where we got the impression that they don't try and get, if you.
Well, I think that's the impression.
Tell them to recruit. I mean, that was the whole point of what these guys do, and did that first stage of the council confusion, says, um, the first stage is we hear from you, they're going to hear loud and clear that you want to see some non-traditional candidates, people who have not served in government before. But that isn't out of, um, that isn't unusual anymore because there aren't very many public sector people. I mean, we're exiting the profession, so they probably aren't, um, people running a business down the street necessarily. They're police chiefs, they're, um, they're, you know, we all know administrators who are mayors before. I mean, Elvin Miller and, and Bealy was a mayor, private sector salesperson. So we, we have Joe, uh, Taylor in Center Point, um, this is his second job. He started, um, in public sector, he was the economic development director in West Branch, and, or West, West Branch. And, um, so I think, I think all you have to do is tell MGT what you're looking for. The problem is the split, is that you all have to be looking for, you're going to end up with one human who has a set of background, that whether, whether, the challenge for MGT is going to be, can they find a person who meets five, six of yous, interests? And that's the challenge that they're excited up for. And I, I think you'll be able to, and I would, you know, as I respond to him, that if that's how this good vote goes, he'll know that's his charge is to work with you to figure out how do you balance those two things? Somebody that knows what's happening, you know, out of a relevant city, but maybe does, does it come from a city background? So, I, I think, you know, they'll absolutely walk you through that.
Well, I would say we give them a chance, they'll be able to decline this offer as well. But I'd say let's give the executive search team a chance, um, they may be able to help us out. Over here, T's of course, but we, we've had a good discussion, so I guess we'll call for a vote this time.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know for there, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to contract with, with a, with anyone on to vote, I'm not going to do it. It's, it's just setting us up for, it's just setting this problem, this, this festering mood to just continue. We, we've got to get around this, we have to. These are, there are, there are decisions that we can be divided on, they're, they're marginal in terms of their effect on the town, and they're marginal in terms of the financial impact and, and their subjective. There are other things that we have to find a way to at least get four people on board, and, and these are the critical decisions, in my view. Somebody else tell me I'm wrong, but that's.
Between now and tomorrow afternoon, or one day when, whoops, the agenda for Tuesday is possible that, um, council members who are not convinced that MGT is the firm would be willing to call Mark and talk about their concerns with the firm? To try to come to some agreement that their interests will be heard, so that you can move forward. Because I will say from the, I, I'm, I'm ready to be done with my role here. And, um, I've kind of looked at, November will be the latest that I want to stay. Which means you need to get started hiring someone, because I'm, it's up to you how you do it, but somebody to take on this role. So, um, it's, I think it's important for you to move forward somehow with a firm that's going to start looking at who you're going to hire.
I don't, yeah, I, my personal view is that, is that I was, I found MGT being a more compelling candidate, but I do want to say, I don't want to put, I don't want to put unfair pressure. And I, you know, for, for, I, I really hope that we can get away from certain council members feeling like there's unfair pressure on them. My, my main point before any of that is somehow we got to find a way to, to start, start voting, like, beyond three to two. I just, I feel like if we, we go into this with that idea, then individual council members that didn't vote for whatever we choose, whatever select, whatever way we go, it, I just, I feel like now they're being dragged along through something that isn't important in the first place. And, and I've, I think it's fair, and we've already talked about this, candidates will be saying like, I want to be confirmed by the council, hired by the council, by unanimous vote. We already know that's a target bringing. It makes no sense to me to start down the path they're on.
But we need, we need to start the process.
Well, again, I believe that you could take Sandy's, um, idea, as well as, I would encourage you to hire, hire the firm of your choice, and then have them work with you to get through this process. If they see a roadblock, be upfront with them, tell them, hey, if you don't feel that this is going to go anywhere, you let us know, talk to us frankly, and, um, we'll exit the door. So, um, let's at least make that step, is to go forward with selecting a firm, get their advice, their expertise, because they do go through this, this process, and see where you land there. And give the folks a chance to get going with it. But we have to, we do need to move the community forward by selecting people in these permanent positions. It's just a matter of fact, that's our job, so. So with that, we do have a motion in second. So with that, we will have a vote. What's the motion? And Sandy, read it.
Okay, yeah, I, um, Peterson moved to contract, to put a contract on Tuesday's agenda with MGT.
Prior to that timeframe, you could call and talk with Mark. And of course, they'll, they'll see the vote too, from tonight's decision, but it's imperative that we take steps to draw the law in this. All right. All clear on the motion, so we'll call for a roll call vote. David Fisher.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
Trevor Dursky.
Keep asking.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Nay.
Trevor Dursky.
How do we, um, so essentially, if we, if we make the decision tonight, we lose next week.
What's going to happen is we're going to go the way we're going now, and nothing is going to get done in this town.
Well, well, but, or, here's, here's to, here's to, here's the fork, right? Or we also continue the way we're going right now. And we have council members swearing at each other in open meetings. We had assertions that the council is not listening to the town. That's, that's the other pack. I don't see how one's better than the other.
I don't know that one is better than the other. This is something that has always happened in towns in Iowa.
It's, go, no, go look at other towns, that is not true.
Okay.
You'll go look at, go look at how other towns pass in budgets.
Normally it doesn't.
To fight a budget vote is unusual.
There have been towns in Iowa that go through these.
But, let's, let's get back to the, I think you had a procedural question, I believe, Trevor. You were asking if the, on the vote tonight, if the vote tonight does not pass, then we would not have a selection yet to provide a contract. Again, at some point, we're going to have to select an executive search firm or some, some other way to make it happen. But, folks, it's. But folks, it's, wherever means the road, decisions have to be made and this is the place to.
No, people, people, I don't think really heard what I was saying, the details of what I was saying, read what I wrote when I was putting materials out. And what I said was, I'm coming, I might tend to come up to this room to figure out how to get this room to get along with each other, how to improve decision making. There's three bullets that I had right in there. I didn't commit to a single decision one way or the other. I had to get more information first and I think that's a fair position to be in. But I feel like if I push this through, I'm not, I'm setting us up for, and I wish I wasn't the only one who saw it this way, for 14 weeks of the same, of more of the same. I mean, if when Mark calls council members that didn't vote for this motion, are you guys going to respond? Are you gonna feel like you can engage in the process and talk to Mark?
Well, as a council, when we vote to do something, it's voted as agreed to accomplish that task. So if the vote tonight is to engage with MGT, then as council members, we would engage with MGT. I don't see a reason why anyone would refuse to do that.
So I really support, I, I thought MGT was the more compelling of the two. I still support going with MGT. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push this through. My vote's nay. I apologize to council members that voted for this, that want this to get done, I do too, but it's gotta be done in the right way.
Right. That concludes the vote. Motion fails. So our next item is to complete the tour.
Can we make another motion to approve the other?
Yes, you can do that. That's, we're, we're at the agenda. Would you concur?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve. The other group is our search firm, professional search firm.
One second.
The same motion to put a contract with them on Tuesday's agenda?
Dave.
Is it the same motion to put a contract with them on Tuesday's agenda?
Okay, so a motion in second. And for the discussion, motion, ready?
I'm in a spot that I was. I don't, I don't know if other council members change their view or not.
I just feel much more comfortable with MGT's proposal. I feel weak strongly about that. I think there could be success with Express, but I just, I think that we really need a process that, that leaves the terms to bring us together. And I didn't hear that from them. I, I'd like to come into a position or a place where we could get a more majority. I'm not sure if you get there, Trevor, but I think that I, I still feel very strongly about going with the MGT proposal. So I don't know how that this works now. I mean, if we, if this vote fails, then do we bring it back up on Tuesday? I mean, is that what would happen?
You could put a discuss, the same discussion on Tuesday.
Okay. I would really like to give all, all of us, all five of us a chance to call, maybe even vote. I mean, but, but at least these concerns that have been brought up, it could be resolved by conversations with Mark and MGT and I think that there's an opportunity for that in the next five days or all the way along until Tuesday.
So the vote reversal would be.
My stronger proposal with MGT, I think that's where you go.
So the vote reversal, I put back at you, I don't feel confident that my voice would be heard with the other one, just like you just said, you don't feel confident in Express, maybe. I just, I don't, I don't feel that. If, if I thought that was the case, then we wouldn't have these divided votes. It wouldn't have been happening for a long time.
And I've got the conclusion, I'm okay with reading two. If that's the way it's gonna be, I mean, it's, it's fine, it's fine with me. You're not breaking my heart anyway. I, I just know what I personally want. I've already shared that with you and I'm okay with moving on in life. Your feelings.
But then we do come up here and reality check. I don't think we can act like it's completely cool. It's when the end of windows, you know, people look at you.
We can't have all.
And then, then you hear that.
Pro share me and don't expect nothing back. Because MGT, it's sick. It's sickening all the time. I see it in him and I see it in me. I'm done with it.
That's where it's coming, so we talked about it.
Cool.
And I think it is important to do that.
You said earlier, Trevor, that trying to find someone who would take a job that you're not getting hired by all of your supervisors, I think is gonna be difficult. Maybe your experience of having, being elected, being hired by a board and three of the five vote to hire you and two of them say, I don't want to hire you. Read the Gazette today about Johnson having supervisors.
We're not at that point right now. We're not at that point right now. We, I would have to interview the person and feel comfortable with the person, but if I have any regret, anything, I'm not gonna move forward. I'm making my decision, just like I am here. I want a local firm that's going to be able to supply us local candidates, a firm that I don't have to pay to go out and have them search for us. I want them to give us their searches and we pay for them. That's what I want. It's, and they're, they do this every day. They do a lot more searches than what MGT does because they do it across a bigger board of people.
I think the one comment I would make about that is that I've worked with both firms in my experience and that MGT works without your HR department and Express works with your HR department. We don't have the HR.
I think that's not always the case.
Did you hear what they said about background checks?
Yeah.
So they would rely on the HR department to conduct that. Oh, we'd decontract with them to do that. They, I imagine that.
I'm just gonna go on some of that. I just assumed, I guess, I honestly would just assumed when he said that comment was, well, no matter what, if they did it or they didn't do it, our expectations were gonna do it no matter what. I mean, I get.
We would have to use our legal staff.
Sorry, can I, I understand that.
I, just understand the difference in these two firms, they are not the same. Their services are not the same.
I, I understand that too.
So if there's any further discussion, we'll have a motion in second floor. Okay, with that, call for the vote. David Fisher.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Nay.
P.J. Bell.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Nay.
Trevor Durski.
Nay.
Motion fails. As a matter of process, that either one of these motions can be brought up again at the next meeting by the prevailing side.
It doesn't have to be on the agenda.
Yes, you'd have a motion to reconsider, but.
On the agenda?
Yeah, well, let's ask Doug. I don't believe it has to be on the agenda. But we did, we have to have the item on the agenda on board that somebody, some council member has indicated.
Maybe that's the question is, do you want this held on Tuesday's agenda?
Yes.
I think as long as the topic's on, maybe make a motion by then.
Okay, so, you know, so if that didn't, Sandy, what if that didn't work? Okay. So at this time, we will recess and reconvene at the public workshop for the tour. We have some commitments, about six, so we'll be moving along and meet you at 111 First Street, Public Works Shop.